This is Jason Anderson and Pauline Delora, the special town council meeting of Tuesday, May 30, 2022. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Ms. Leroy George is with us from Oak. We move on in the agenda. The next item up is item three, interviews for boards and commissions. First one up is David Izzo Jr. Seeking reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Izzo has been a member of the zoning board of appeals, a regular member since February 2016. Previously was an alternate member since October 2012. His attendance has been steady over the course of this appointment. The zoning board of appeals is a commission of five regular members and three alternate members. Currently, there are four active regular members, including Mr. Izzo. There are three alternate members seeking vacancies. The term will run from February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2026. Welcome, Mr. Izzo. Can you just tell us a little bit about your time on planning on, excuse me, zoning board of appeals and why you're seeking reappointment?
Hi, I'm on zoning board of appeals. Okay. I've been on for a while. We probably have the dates of your interview. I enjoyed, you know, helping out community a little bit. And I just enjoyed being on board with my fellow members, so it's really important.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council? I will.
Yeah, I've been the new liaison for zoning board of appeals and I've also known Dave for a few years now. So Dave's been great on that. I think he asked some really great questions and that board does a great job. So I definitely would support Dave on that as well.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for your time, sir. It's always great when members of the community volunteer their time to help the community out. Without all the boards and commissions, it wouldn't be possible to do everything we need to do. Any other special comments, Mr. Greenfield?
Yeah, I want to compare with what Jason said. I'm glad people come out. All right, I really appreciate people coming out and it's a volunteer position. If you don't know what's coming forward, you've got to put up with a lot of group at times. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, do you have any, anything that's been concerning that's come across to the zoning board of appeals recently or?
Uh, no, man, not yet.
Nothing, anything that we can do to help you guys out?
We need a couple more members.
We need you to say that because that's going to go out to everybody else. We need more volunteers. You're already out there, so we need help. Thank you. I like that comment.
And we understand there are quite a few openings, vacancies on a lot of the boards and commissions. And we do what we can to try to recruit people. I know it's always tough, but I will say from someone who's served on commissions, served on like a public safety commission before I ran for council, I really enjoyed my time being able to get back to the town in that aspect. So it's something I encourage everyone to at least try. And we can always use members in all the boards and commissions.
Now, I know P and Z and Inland Wetlands has their own specific set of guidelines. Does that apply to zoning board of appeals as well?
Yes, ma'am.
So you like had to do extra?
A lot of studying. I bring my bookwork into every minute to make sure I read right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, again, I want to thank you for your time, sir. We will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, item 3B, Richard Miller is seeking appointments at agriculture commission. There are currently three regular members and two alternate vacancies available?
I don't see him here, so I'm not sure if he was unable to make it.
And so moving on in the agenda to 3C, I believe, Mr. Aubrey was also?
Yeah, Mr. Aubrey was sick tonight, so he was unable to attend. He's requested to go on to your June meeting.
Thank you. We'll move further on in the agenda. Next item up is item four, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Delora, do we have anything submitted?
We had no public comments submitted via email.
At this time, we will open up for any public comment. Anyone who would like to make comment on anything that is on tonight's agenda, which would be our items in new business and also our one applicant who was already here. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address. Any public comment? Last call for public comment. We'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is item five, old business. And we have none. We'll move on to item six, A, new business. Update meeting with planning and zoning commission, presentation of redistricting, redistricting, voting districts, two of the registers, and zoning official Jonathan Blake.
Yep, they already do.
Jonathan is way ahead of him. Good like that.
Bob just last night.
He did because he was so good.
I did. I did ask beforehand. I was told you guys could wait, you know. Yeah, Facebook seems to be changing stuff all the time. We've done them both at the same time. And I don't know, it's because of the two groups.
So just to kind of kick this off really quick before I turn it over to Jonathan and him. So the, you know, we went through the 2020 census and so we had to determine whether or not our voting districts had to be redone or lines moved on the voting districts in order to keep our voting districts in balance, right? So they're never perfectly the exact same number in every single location, but ideally you want to stay within a very small variance between the difference. So the smaller piece of paper that I gave you is our voting districts from 2014 and the counts within all of those districts. And of course, our population has changed. So from the 2014, if you add that, all those numbers up at the bottom, we had a population at that point of 17,000, 17,370. The current population of the 2020 census is 17,754. So some has been increased. We've only had one, one of our districts decreased only a small amount. But overall, so typically the process is that we evaluate to see what the changes are. If there's significant differences, we would have a subcommittee of the town council meet with the planning and zoning commission to review redistricting and redrawing lines and stuff like that. So we have before you the, really the raw data of the 2020 census and the residents in each of those components and what that balance looks like. And from our evaluation, I don't believe there needs to be any redistricting. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan and he can go over more of the process of where and how he pulled the numbers as well as the districting.
Yep. So pulled the numbers directly from US census. Brought in all of the different census tracts and groups. Manually overlaid our districts or voting districts and manually went through each one and tallied them up as and came up with the count. Did that twice just to make sure all the numbers matched up. They did match up. The difference between the highest district being District 1 in terms of population and District, I believe, 4 being the lowest is 112 people. That's a 3.2% difference. It's very small. That's total population. There's not necessarily voting members of each one. It's kind of an equal representation and it's in line of what we saw in the 2010 or 2014 when the redistricting occurred in terms of numbers. There's not much of a switch. We also overlaid the house districts. That was one of the areas that was kind of inflexed and change over the years. And so you will see that kind of separated on your, on your maps where District 2 and District 4 are somewhat split between House District 51 and House District 44.
And that's identified by this dotted line, correct?
A dotted line that kind of goes through Rogers and then shoots up to 101. The reasoning for the split, I have no idea in terms of how they chose that. In Rogers, it actually splits a couple of the census tracts. So if we had to go down the line of redistricting, we would have to individually canvas some of those tracts to determine the exact population breakout in those tracts because we just get a raw number. Usually when you redistrict, you want to follow those tracks.
We're very happy. We don't really need to make any changes. It's, the 112 is a very small difference in difference of population. And like Jonathan said, it does not reflect really a difference in voter counts, but just population.
And Pam, if you can, number one, maybe you can hit your mic just that way they can pick you up individually. But also, so the, as far as house seats, District 2 and District 4 are currently split anyway, right?
They've been split for a very long.
So that hasn't changed with regards to our polling sites and?
None of our polling places will need to change. No voters will have to move anywhere. Everything will stay as is.
I do have one question. So you mentioned a 3.2% difference. At what percentage would you normally start to look into doing redistricting?
I think it's 5%. And that's what I was finding was at 5%. That's when you might want to start looking at what areas would make sense to try to balance.
Mr. Greenfield?
No, what about if, one of the townspeople was in one district, they're right on the border. Could they petition to, when you're doing this, to say, you know, if you move that line and it's still within the, you know, within the 5% to make it, has that ever happened?
Not to my knowledge. No. Would it be allowed? I know there is a way to petition. I believe it's a 200 signature. Don't quote me on that.
No, I'm just wondering, I mean, if, say they were in a district that had more and they wanted, it was that, that close, I don't know how, and it would have to be at a, some type of a monument type of thing, an intersection. It just can't be, it's got to have some basis.
And again, it's by that census tract, right? So you have to go by the census tract. You can't just buy one house. It would have to go by the census tract. That way we can keep the population. Because we don't get, the population data that we have is based on, sent by federal census tract, not by, you know, they have counted each individual house in there. But, you know, if you look at this, you can see little spots, little, little round dots in there. Those are census tracts. So if you see where one of those are, there can be a large amount of space around those. Or very tiny, like in the borough, there's a lot of smaller spaces because those are smaller census tracts because it's a higher density, a higher population density. But, so you would, you would want to stay with the census tract. So it's not just one person. You would want to have the whole census tract moved.
Oh, no, but I'm, okay, I just want, I'll just.
It would be complex.
Okay, that's what I'm getting. But it would have to be where there was some type of intersection. Because our, like you say, our districts, there is some variation in the district.
Right, but very similar to what there was prior. There's no significant change to that. Similar.
And then, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at these maps. These maps haven't changed, but my voting map, when I had the voting map coming in the other, you know, now that's changed. I've lost voters, so whatever.
Well, that was a correction. So there was clearly an error on that. And so there was a correction on that. So the ordinance, the actual ordinance that's in place designating these districts doesn't need to change. We verified and clarified all those components that you had questions on. Absolutely.
Well, I'm coming in and, what's going on? I was confused and, you know, who had priority, you know, over what? What is the, this map is, is the map and the voter map has to comply with this. And the voter map is the one that's.
So this map ties to the ordinance. And the ordinance is the, is the governing document that drives what the actual districts are. So this is a pictorial representation of that ordinance. And so that's, that's the basis.
And being a staff at the time with the census data, I mean, from two, the last census, District 2, your district rate has gone up 92 residents. But 2020 to now, a lot has changed in the real estate market. I suspect most of these numbers have gone up across the board in terms of residents. Most of our apartments are full. New houses are built. Seems to be a lot of people moving to this area.
Any other questions, comments? One thing I did look at really quick, looking at the numbers. It looks like we're coming, like the percentage difference is actually less now than it was going back to the 2014. Because I saw it was 132, population difference between like District 3 and 4 was 132. And that was the biggest difference between the two. And then looking at this time around is 112. So it's actually gotten to a smaller percentage.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Do you have anything else you want to mention?
Well, I think there's a kind of a second part to the.
Yeah, so the next piece was really an update with the planning and zoning. So normally you would meet with planning and zoning. And I know that you would reach out to your planning and zoning members to try and have them attend. But, so Jonathan was prepared to give some update with regards to planning and zoning. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation. One of the goals with the town council was the, was visioning. And I know Council, Councilor Leroy had, Patty George had mentioned presentation with regards to P O C D. So I figured I would bring Jonathan in and.
Yep. So the planning and zoning commission would like when the budget's done. You know, those greener pastures, we're almost there. When the budget's done in the next month or so, to come in as a joint meeting workshop almost to go through the plan of conservation development, which is that 10-year plan.
Here's Keith.
There's Keith. So I do have Keith here. So that 10-year plan to kind of go through it as in much detail as the town council would like. There are action items, some of them we probably can check off since we brought that new plan in. But it's a live document. It's something that every 10 years we revisit, but could be revisited sooner. It's a document that involves public participation. We always advertise for those meetings. We did a charade at the high school that was pretty well attended and were directly with the town council for input on that document. So the last update would have been the last town council.
Yes.
But it is a live document, so it's something that we can always look at and see if there's, needs to be a better focus on individual items as they, as they work together. And now that I have Keith, the chair, here, want to add anything? I actually meant most of your conversation. I was just inviting the, or asking for the planning and zoning commission to come at a later date to the town council to present, to present the plan of conservation development, just kind of going over the document as it relates as a vision of the 2020 to 2030 plan for the town.
I'm not sure. I'm not at speed with the newer ones. Anyway, I don't know. Most of the time we just try to tell you what's going on, what changes we've done. There's been quite a few changes. Regulation wise, we've zoned, we did a couple of zone changes. We did summer a text change for warehousing and commercial. Seems to be the way people are going so that people could be picking up things in there at these stores like Target or something. People were starting to pick things up and bulk, I guess, out the back door rather than out the front door. I think that's how it was presented anyway at the time. But it, but it does go and change the whole face of general commercial by having that in it. We had, we just got through with free delay and very, very, very long discussions with that, which I have to say, I already mentioned it, the town manager, that was very appreciative. I know in the past I've spoken to you that we haven't had any attorney representation. And we, we have and it has paid off tremendously in the last, I don't know, 10 months, I guess, or something like that. So it's, I mean, at one point I kind of thought that they were taking over our jobs for a while, you know. So, so go ahead and debate it. We'll go have coffee and lunch. You know, so, no, but it's definitely, you know, the issues are there and it's needed. It's been needed and it's been there, so thank goodness for that. One thing I would like to request and that is if we couldn't get more participation from the economic development. In the past, we've had very strong feedback when it comes to changing, especially dealing with commercial regulations and commercial zones. And we did get some feedback on the latest one we just did with Douglas Construction there. We did get some feedback. But typically, we, we work hand in hand with economic development. And it's, I don't know, just haven't had that, you know, debate back and forth. Because to us, they represent the town, they represent, you know, town side of things. And if we're going in the right direction or not, you know, we just feel better when we have their support or their direction and guidance. We've had some, in the past years, we've had some very major things happen in cooperation with them. We've had meetings that we've both been in attendance to work things out. We did, you know, the commercial, looking for more commercial properties. We did a whole big thing way back. I can't even remember now when it was, sometime in 2007, 08, something like that. I don't know. Where they spent $25,000 or $30,000 on a study as to where, what the commercial, which ended up being, the recommendation was to put it out behind what used to be progress. So there's a lot of commercial property out there. Unfortunately, it's rough terrain to go with it, you know. But it's, it's very helpful, you know, to work with them, to have their guidance. So it's glad I get some input, but I'd like to see a lot more if we could.
I did was just at the Economic Development Commission very briefly earlier today. And it was a bit of a discussion around interaction. And I'd recommended that perhaps the commission set up a joint meeting to really kind of talk through some of the questions and guidance. And so they can provide feedback and input as commission mem, as a full commission to the planning and zoning commission. And I think they were looking to want to be able to do that. So I think that would be good for the commissions to be able to get together as bodies.
Yeah, we had a significant relationship in the past and it's, and it is really helpful to know you're, got the support, you want to do what people want. You don't really necessarily just pass your own judgment all the time. It's kind of nice to have. And you know, you're thinking in unison. So that's, that would be great.
No, I, I would piggyback on that and agree. On a staff point of view, when we have like a pre-application meeting with say a commercial entity, we usually will recommend discussions with the Economic Development Commission to seek a recommendation for them if there are an endorsement because they can kind of go over, you know, the more economics of it versus planning and zoning. Sometimes the timing is a thing. A lot of times an application comes in, they're ready to break ground yesterday. So that does happen. But other than that, we need the affordable housing study, something that will be coming to you guys next week, which was something I previously discussed with you guys. But the planning and zoning commission did affirm it and passed it along through an 824 review. Again, that's also a live document that should be used as a, for. And we have a few text change amendments that are going to be coming forward. There's one that's already scheduled for cannabis as well as some changes to be permitted as of right uses as a garage in a residential district instead of being looked at as an accessory use. So those will be, we'll be having some meetings on and discussing and getting feedback from our listening.
Yeah, currently, if you've got a piece of property, you can't necessarily put a building on it unless you are going to have that building associated with agriculture. Under the agricultural right, you can put another building up for storing different farm tractor and other things. But if you've got a piece of land and you want to use it for your personal use, storing different cars, whatever you want, you know, wood or wood shop, whatever, it's not there. So we've been working on it for some time so that now you can, you know, with some good checks and balances in there. So it just gives people the ability to use their land, you know, maybe average just to help, try to keep them and keep it and maybe help them to justify maintaining a vacant field or make a piece of land and make it, utilize it and benefit from its being there. Other than, you know, quite frankly, if somebody has to, wants to use it for something other than farm tractors, they could just, well, it's going to be a, you know, my, quite frankly, you know. So instead of having to force somebody to do something like that now, it's, you know, make it useful. So as far as, you got any questions for us or?
Oh, not, not so much a question, but I know, I just want to bring this up. One thing that's been brought up to me several times over the past few years, and I started hearing it right before COVID, was what is the vision of the town? Where do we want to go? And I've always responded with, well, we do have the plan of conservation development. We do have that. But some of the responses I got back from that is, well, that's separate from, and I've heard it a lot lately, the image of the town. What do we want Killenley to be? Where do we want Killenley to go? And it's been brought up a couple of times, well, we should start a vision committee, just a sunset committee to have a plan. This is where we want to go. And I completely agree with, if you don't have a plan of where you want to go, you're, when things come up, you don't know if, all right, well, is this in line with where the town council wants to go? Is this in line with where the residents want to go? So I completely understand that having a document like that, which in a sense, I guess, would piggyback with the P O C D, especially when it comes to like the image side of it. Wouldn't be so much P O C D, but it would tie into a lot of what the P O C D has in it and how whatever comes out of that could have, could influence where the direction of the P O C D goes as well. So almost like having two documents that work together. And it's, there's a lot of things that have, that have been coming, like the renovations we're going to be doing right here in downtown. I mean, it, it's great to see revitalizing of downtown. I'm really happy to see that we got the grant for that. And I don't want to see it stop for that. I want to see Killenley continue to move forward. And I believe it's easier when you have a plan in place and.
Yeah, and that's where the, you know, I recommended that the planning and zoning commission meet with the town council to start in the initial phases of just going over the P O C D. As a founder. to start in the initial phases of just going over the P O C D as a foundational component. Really just to identify what's already in there, what's already been identified as a vision. There's been so much work done to the P, with the P O C D and with the public with the P O C D, you know. So much engagement from the, from the residents already in their input into that. To just, you know, have both bodies fully understand what's there as a foundational component. And then identify what gaps the council still feels needs to be defined. But to at least start with that as an introductory port, point, I felt, I thought was a, was a good opportunity to start.
Absolutely. We, we had back when, I don't know how many people remember, I think that would probably remember for sure, but early two thousand five, six, something like that, maybe, we had the Borderlands project. The Borderlands project was a grant funded by Vermont Country Store. And they went and they, the, uh, their goals were to pair up a town with uh one state. Like Connecticut had Killingly, the other one was exited Rhode Island. And we, we worked hand in hand and we had, but the, to me, the big thing was we had meetings over a period of close to a year. And, you know, people, they, they had money to spend, so they had consultants come in and organize it. And then they had food there, but they cut the, they drew the public out. And then with all that input, we actually created goals for the towns. Not necessarily goals that were ever implemented, but it gave to the, the administration, I guess, a guidance. Because it was from the people, it was created by the people. We were giving out workshops where you had maps and said, okay, this is what we want, what do you, what do you guys want to do? And how do you want to do it? You know, like in the future, I mean, at the time it was, you want zoning to have, uh, you want your storefronts and buildings, your commercial buildings to be all on the street and be up there. That's what was the consensus at the time. Put all the buildings on the street, put all the parking in the back. So you could make it with foot traffic, you're close, everybody can go to the store, to the store, to the store, on the, on the street front. And then everybody parks in the back. You know, there was all kinds of different goals that, you know, it's, it takes more than just a zoning board to implement. It takes actual dollars and cents from the commercial side of people in town. So, but it was great in the sense that it gave a lot of input as to what people really wanted. I mean, I remember getting out of it, they, we don't really want development east of three ninety-five. They wanted all the development to end up, and that was actually reinforced with P O C D meetings that we had. You know, try to keep the commercial development close to three ninety-five. Try to take the eastern part of Killingly and keep it rural. Yeah, you know, so um, it's, you know, so that's kind of like part of the reason, I think, that last property had, you know, touch and go about which way to go with the zoning change. But it's, it was a great, it was a great amount of feedback, what you're talking about, what you're talking about, it's a great idea and how you put it together. I think a lot of people could benefit from that.
And, and one thing I think that may even be a byproduct of it, which would be great, is the more people we get involved with something like that, that may encourage more people to volunteer for the boards and commissions and affiliate decisions we have, which would further help the town out as well.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a big, we haven't had a full commission in how many years?
Yeah. Yeah, I, a lot of the commissions, like Z P A is out of there, only four members. Can look by lines and that of minimum four members. One member is sick or has a work thing and that's pushing back an application, uh, which is somebody's money, someone's time. That they, you know, want to invest in community or on, or even on their home, that we have to delay. That homegrown kind of, you know, making it the P O C D and Killingly document, right? Has been a focus uh over, I think, starting really with that two thousand ten year and then in the two thousand twenty year. A lot of towns, I would say the majority of towns, outsource their P O C D at great cost to the residents. We don't do that. We keep it in-house, we have a professional staff and we try to, you know, go through it. Make sure that the document meets the standards that it needs to meet for the state, for grants. But at the same time, helps work towards those goals. Like someone who's looked at downtown development where we got that grant and stuff, I guarantee there is bullet points about redevelopment in downtown that supported that grant application. We try to make it somewhat open-ended to work for those types of applications.
Yeah, just to add to that, it's, you got a lot of public input, a lot more than you do when you see with these other towns where they outsource it. You don't get as much public input on there, they kind of generate it from what they perceive what's going on, direction. Whereas I think by us, with our participation, you know, from the public.
You're seeing, in your place being on the board, you're talking to town people. Well, why don't you come to our meeting, where we have these other professional people in there? They're not out there, engage, engage with the public wherever you might be, you know, on official meeting or, oh, you know, why don't you mention something, why don't you come down to our meeting, we're having this open discussion on something, so, yeah, it tends to.
It's always better to have public input.
Yes, yes. One. Couple of comments, when during the last election, I caught a rationed degree of funds with our heights. Being one dead-end road, too many houses on. And I would get people coming to me and point the finger, you've better get another outlet to this subdivision. And I said, hey, that was, how many, that's fifty years ago, that was developed, you know, way beyond any of this. But is there a limit to how many units can go on some of these dead-end, you know? I don't know, even someone had a smaller street and they were complaining, well, what if a tree goes down and can't get out? I said, well, you bought into that subdivision, I'm sorry, that's, that's what it is, but I don't know what your thoughts.
Regulations actually say how many millio feet, our regulations pertain to how many millio feet you can go into a project and on a single, on a single road, access road. I remember one subdivision we had years ago and they wanted further. And the way they resolved that was like putting a boulevard in, or a boulevard you have, like to go in and kill in the comments. Technically speaking, it's. So, so from a technical point of view, you know, what if you have a big tree, I guess it's possible. You know, that's an ideal situation, but.
And then on, on, another thing is on, on the lots, especially when you get into the cul-de-sacs. Can we identify a particular place for a snow shelf?
That's, that's been something that, that we've been pushing a lot for over recent years.
I mean, we, you know, we can't go back to the older stuff, but I mean, when Mary had the pictures, they had, you know, snow piled up on Main Street here during that last storm. It doesn't happen that often, but then again, we're falling. Why are we falling snow somewhere else when let it stay where it should be, let it go into the ground there?
I think technically speaking, it happens to fall snow offside anyway. Believe it or not, but um, yeah, we.
I, you know, brought on Tom into the test with it. He's been very aggressive on looking at snow. We recently updated our off-street parking standards, which uh kind of speak more to the everyday business. Not necessarily subdivision, but even more of a commercial entity. And uh, snow, snow shelves and design are an important element. I'm pretty sure the Planning and Zoning Commission recently denied an application that kind of ignored that. They came back with that being addressed amongst other issues. But that was, you know, I think one of the main factors in that denial, that, you know, it's great to pretend that we're in the middle, in the Midwest and everything's flat and everything's perfect and, but it's New England, we get snow. So we have to, you know, design for that. So it's been an element there. I want to say it's addressed in the subdivision regulations, but there's been a little more special attention, I think, to the nuances of those regulations when we get the applications. Even something as like open space is, is mentioned in those regulations being, you know, a viable piece. And not just taking, you know, the little chunks that are on fifteen-degree slopes that are in the back, that are three feet deep, that no one's gonna put a shed on, you know, or, or, you know, encroach upon. We want usable space and we're gonna give back space to open space, otherwise doofy and luau. So that there's, there's different elements in there and that's, it's kind of a check and balance. But with the door heights, I can't speak to what happened fifty years ago.
And that comes up almost every time when I'm getting there, I'm stopped or doing something. Especially compared to a storm situation within the past weeks. They want to be.
I remember right at over there, there is, there was actually a right-of-way that on the southern side of that subdivision, that is a buyer who owns it.
Well, that's.
And again, it goes into the private sector of who's gonna look at and buy it and.
But there was something with that that came up in conversation too. Oh, we don't want anybody using that, well, you can't have both. And then there was some legal issues as to what, maybe who had the rights to use it.
Yeah, I think there was some spike strips used and other items used to try to not activate that. Which was more common back in the day. But during our process now with a subdivision, brand-new subdivision, again, perfect out in Kansas, Flatlock, we, we put it, we do that one-stop shop even before it goes to planning and zoning. And we get the fire marshal involved, we look at, with Dave Cap, our engineer. And we're trying to get all those comments to, and it's mentioned in subdivision that that's a part of the application process, to shorten the process, to get all those comments out there, have the applicant have time to address them so we see a complete application. They can choose to ignore those, those comments and go forward to, the mission of those comments would still be there, particularly if we're talking about those like life safety things. But you do have to be careful not to just say it's life safety, it has to be based in regulation. And I think that that's in the regulations of those, you know, the distances of travel. And there's encouragements to having a good flow on a site.
And then another thing, when they put sidewalks into subdivision, can you push the sidewalk far enough off the road so when plows go by, you don't pack the snow up higher than it was on the roadway? I don't know what that's addressed.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that, again, that planning for the snow, you know, looking at that one-stop shop, even getting our highway director. If you're looking at adopting a town road, right, because we're talking about that snow removal process, it's mostly with town forces. Most subdivisions, they want to turn the road over. That's a, a forever reliability for the town. We take on a road and we're, we're not like a business where, you know, I get old, I retire and maybe the business shudders. You know, that, that, or I pass it along. But the municipalities, hopefully, forever, right? So that road, we have to see if it is a viable addition to the town. If, you know, I don't, it doesn't matter if there's a hundred houses on it, in most cases, the taxes aren't gonna pay to repave that road. Not in the twenty, thirty years, but I'll defer that to Mr. Dewey on that end. But the, the, uh, the road's design is important. And I think we should be very particular before we accept a road as a town road and make sure that it's correctly done.
When we're looking at the acceptance, that should be, I don't know if it's playing a little history. Here's the list that we have to meet and we give that, an applicant comes in and you will meet this. The sidewalk has to be so far away. Well, they put the road here and there's a big outcrop in the ledge, well, the sidewalk is gonna be in the road. You know, there's not even a room to put a sidewalk in. You know, something that flag it so they understand upfront and then it's not an antagonistic situation down the road. I spent all this design money to do this and I'm just, you know, timeout power, you know, there's the rules right here. And then we start, you know, going open. I, I don't want to burden, I, I think you guys have burdened enough with a lot of stuff. Somehow if we can help you to make it easier, that's what I'm looking at from the standpoint of, you know, of course I'm getting comments, you know, from seventy or fifty years ago, but.
Yeah, they're, they're set design criteria and unfortunately, again, New England, the ledge outcrops and stuff, you know, tend to be in the worst place.
Right, right.
But ledge can be moved.
Well, that too, that, that's.
That's kind of the cost of doing business, you know, if, if it's in the way. And they could go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for a waiver or modification to a site plan because of the design, you know, unforeseen design conditions, it does happen. But it, sometimes we want that sidewalk, it's that public, you know, give back for that type of use. Other times, you know, it's out on ledge road and maybe that subdivision really doesn't really need sidewalks. Because once they get to the edge of the property, where are they gonna go? You know, so there's a, there's considerations, I think, for all, all properties. But I have an agreement with you and Mr. Gudowski that we have to do space, special attention to the long term.
That was another comment that came up in conversation, that someone said, well, I'm in a subdivision, I'm out in, I'm out never, never land. And they never, or we bought into it and they never put a sidewalk in because it didn't attach to another sidewalk. But I would like to take my baby carriage and run it around the subdivision and I don't want to be in the roadway. So it's like, I don't include a sidewalk in any of this stuff, I, I don't, you know.
But then you have other ones that come back and ask us as, as an H O A association and they gotta be clean. They don't want, they don't want the burden of it, so they said, can we do away without our sidewalks?
No, I understand that, I don't, I don't want a sidewalk in front of my house, let's put it that way. I don't, I, but in, in this scenario, where do we go with that? That, that's, you know, it hasn't been there, so it's, it's not a whole one. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot of discussion and maybe that comes up with the conversation of that, what are we looking for? If you have a, a group of people coming in, how can we engage the public, you know, to, to get involved in some of these things? Because that's the best way, throw out anything, that's what we need, we need to have these different ideas. As outrageous as some of them might be.
We, we had one subdivision, we did, was approved and we had, at the time, we were allowing narrower roads. And the bus drivers were actually coming to our meetings complaining that this is too narrow. So what we did is we, because the way that they were meeting the regulations is we required a bus stop at the entrance so that the buses wouldn't have to actually travel there. And for some reason, it never got built and never got in the forest and whatever. So there's no bus stop and there's a narrow road and the buses drive down the aisle.
There's a newer one being built right now, added on a different project. And they already submitted plans for their bus stop, so they're being built, we're making sure that they get built now. Because there, there are a few of them, you know, you look at them.
There's a whole different staff.
Yeah, you look at, you look at a site plan application and you're like, where's this, you know?
I'd rather have it, you know, if we can get a lot of this upfront or ask, have the questions way upfront so that, so far with the design.
We, you know, you have to remember subdivision like roads, when the town has to approve a road, or you guys have to approve a, a road for pride and to become a town road. The requirements are that they present it to you before we approve it in our regulation. You're supposed to be presented with that, so at least you have a full warning.
I think that would be a good idea, not.
I think it's, I'm not, it's in it. If, if they're proposing, I believe, for that town adoption, sometimes that comes later. When the, when the H O A figures out, oh, we have to repave and we, maybe we could give it away.
Lack of the bus stop, that came and there was a lot of discussion then, oh, but you have to approve it. Wait a minute, but what if we don't approve it, it's all built? So, you know, I, I mean, it's hard to catch everything, but I mean, it'd be nice to, I don't know.
Because there's a way to beat it, people are gonna beat it.
Oh, no, I.
It's human nature.
But we have, but, you know, when you look at it, the town's gonna eat it over time, you know, so if there's a problem, we're gonna pay and pay and pay. So Mr. Developer or Mrs. Developer, they come in and they want to cut, no, no, we're gonna eat it. So we pay for it upfront and for that test.
Yeah, that, just touching it on and not to waste too much of time on it. But the, the design criteria for that town road is, is much more costly. So we're looking at drainage, we're looking potentially at sidewalks, we're looking at stricter scrutinism of, you know, thickness of the pavement and everything like that. It's not a private driveway, it's not a private road. It's not a private driveway, it's not a private road. Traffic volume is most likely will be different. And again, we don't want to have to do that severe maintenance on it or see, you know, something was gone wrong with it. So we have.
We don't have a twenty on the, on the, whatever that is.
We don't want the bad numbers that Mr. Dewey was talking about there. So, but, yeah, it's that forever cost. If we take on those roads, we take on those roads with plus sidewalks, well, we're redoing those sidewalks. Where, you know, having a large snow event and we have people calling up because the plows are pushing the snow on the sidewalk. And then they want town forces out there clearing the sidewalks. And it becomes this cascade, you know, of, of cost and liability. And it's, it's something that, it's a lot to look at when somebody's just like, I want to put three houses on this. You know, this is a small subdivision, but all those things need to be considered with each application. It's a, it's a unique power that the planning and zoning commission has over that.
But a lot of it too isn't the first owner of the property. All of a sudden now you're getting the third owner and what they're looking at from a much, a different standpoint. And, you know, they connect this and this, you know, they're knocking on the front door, okay, why didn't you do this?
Things change, people change.
Maybe that's what we need, we'd have more people coming into our.
Hi, hi Keith, hi Jonathan. No, I just wanted to thank you both for coming in and I appreciate setting up the P O C D meeting after we're all through the budget. I appreciate that. Hopefully, a lot of people from the community will participate. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you for coming. Appreciate everything you do for the town.
All good, for my tardiness there.
Your timing was actually really good. Okay, well, now move on to the agenda. Next item on is six B, presentation by four H Wyndham on their application for American Rescue Plan Act one.
Thank you for, thank you for having us. My name's Heather Loggia, I'm the camp director for Wyndham, Talon, four H camp. And our, we're asking for money to help repair our dam. We have been working on it for three and a half years already with DEP. We have to repair the valve section of our dam. This is Barry Ryder, he's our planning chair and kind of leading, leading that project. And we have to raise about a million dollars. The quote that the engineering company has given us ranges anywhere from eight hundred and fifty to one point three million. And as a nonprofit organization, coming off some really tough times. We didn't have camp in 2020 due to COVID. Twenty twenty-one, we were able to come back, but at a reduced capacity because of staffing issues, not being able to get enough staff. We usually hire staff from overseas, weren't able to do that either. So we're looking better for twenty, for twenty twenty-two in kind of all of those areas. But having to use a lot of our resources, our financial resources to make it through twenty twenty without going belly up. We don't have the excess funds that we might have had to try to put towards this project. And we've been doing fundraising for about a year and a half now. But, you know, they're small things, they're not, they're nothing, you know, that we can do that's going to raise us a million dollars, you know, in one shot. So we are going to all of the towns in Wyndham and Talon counties that our kids come from. They come from all over, but particularly Wyndham and Talon is our, kind of our main area. And asking each town to hopefully provide some of the American Rescue Plan funds to help us with this project. You, I think you've all probably read our application, hopefully. The sheet I gave you tucked in our, kind of in our brochure. It's just some highlights from that application and some camper quotes. We had, this summer, we had kids writing letters to potential donors. We've been working on trying to get some bonding from the state as well. And kids writing letters to bonding when we did our lodge project seven years ago. We were able, you know, with kids writing letters to the state, we were able to get a half a million additional bonding on top of the original bonding that we had gotten. So the kids worked really hard this summer writing letters to raise support. Channel three came out, they did some great interviews with the kids. And we get a lot of kids from Killenley that come to our camp. And a lot of kids that we give campership money to. So our campership funds are for kids that can't afford to come to camp but need to come to camp. And so we are, we're hoping that you guys will do that. If Barry wants to speak to any of the, I don't.
Just to hear a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead. And then, yeah, I think any questions that you guys have, hopefully we'll have to answer those.
So I'm a South Killenley resident and I went to camp there when I was a kid, a long time ago. The, since two thousand nineteen, when we determined that we had some sort of problem with our earth dam on camp. We've invested a hundred thousand dollars with an engineering firm, Wright Pierce on Middletown, to do studies and, and, and design work. And it's a slow process, partly because the money flow is slow for us. But up to, through last month, we just topped a hundred thousand dollars invested. What we have are three alternatives, or two alternatives to the main project and, and another one. So there are three estimates. Last fall, when Tropical Storm Ida hit, we were out there looking at it and there was a very heavy water flow over the spillway. And the spillway is situated so that the water runs parallel to the toe of the dam, which is unfortunate. But that's the way it's always been here since we haven't done. And it washed the toe of that dam out. Some of the soil, some of the drains that ran along the base, they were washed out. And so we have a construction estimate of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars just to make repairs to what happened in Ida. And then there, there's a couple of alternatives. We have a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar alternative that repairs the, the pipeline through the drain pipe, the valve, and stabilizes the bank even more. And we have a fifty percent complete design on that right now, which was submitted last week to DEP for their review. We, we were kind of on a schedule to have that into them by the end of the month so that they would allow us to continue to, to operate the dam and keep the pond full if we, as long as we have a monitoring plan similar to what we did last summer. So that the pond can stay full for the operation of the camp. The, the other quote that we had, it's not a quote, it's a, the engineer's estimate, construction estimate, is to add a new spillway so that it is going perpendicular to the dam rather than washing the toe out there and leave our current spillway as, as a backup, an overflow spillway. Unfortunately, that kicks the number up to the, the number you, you heard, a one point two seven million. Much better long-term fix for, for the dam because we're not going to wash that toe out again with a heavy water. It's going to go perpendicular into the stream away from the dam. So it'll, it'll protect itself to some degree. But it's a big chunk of concrete and they have a big number on it. So right now, we're into DEP with a fifty percent plan. And we're, we're moving forward with, with the other alternative of designing the spillway.
I never camped that up there, but I've been there a number of times. Went to auctions and a few other things. And the waterfront, whatever conversation you hear or whatever, the waterfront is the key. Whatever it is, the parents, the kids, that has to be there, so.
It is definitely vital to our continuation. You know, we're going into our sixty-eighth camping season. And if it wasn't for the pond and for the, not only the fishing and the swimming and the canoeing and hiking, but just the environmental impact it would have to not have it there would be huge. And it'd be detrimental to our business of getting kids outside and away from the electronics, so.
So fifty percent design plan you have, is that for the design to add the new spillway?
It doesn't include the spillway. But when we reviewed these over the last couple of weeks, we, we, we told them that we really wanted to go in that direction. I mean, right now, either one of those is, is a gigantic number of dollars, more than what we have. But for the long term, it's, it would be, it would really be a better alternative. We, we looked at some other alternatives too, that were even more expensive and kind of backed off. That could have been a bigger improvement than doing that.
I think it might be, well, it must have been on. But I, I, you know, and like Barry said, like, so we talked about even putting a new dam farther down. And that was a two point eight million dollar budget, you know. So we, we were trying to go, but we want a long term, right? I don't want to be doing this again in thirty years, you know, having to search for money. So if we can do a more long-term, you know, fix, that would be fantastic, so.
I would, you had indicated that you've kind of sent out applications to the Talon and Wyndham County municipalities. Have you had received commitments from any of those municipalities? And if so, how much you've received so far in commitment?
We have not received any commitments yet. We know the borough, we're on the borough's agenda, I think they're voting next week. Popret, we are on their list, but they haven't divvied any of their funds out yet. We have submitted completed applications to Brooklyn. And I think they, we were on their agenda last weekend, haven't heard anything since. And Woodstock did not give us in the first round, but we're still on their list for the second round, hopefully. So we are, and we've been, you know, we've been reaching out and over and over and over again to other towns. You know, to every town trying to beat down their doors to, to get, at least even to come and talk to them and, you know, give that in-person presentation. But unfortunately, most towns have not been very receptive. We appreciate you guys being receptive to us coming and talking to you.
Now, one question I have is, depending on what you end up getting from the local towns that you've put your requests in for, for the ARCA funding. If you fall short on what it's going to cost to do the repairs, whether you go the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar or the one point two seven million dollar repair, what are your plans as far as raising the funds to do the rest of it? I know with the ARCA funds, there is a deadline as far as when all the towns have to appropriate the funds and when they have to be expended as well.
Yes.
How would that work with your timeline under repairs?
So we are going to continue to go after the state and for bonding and other grant opportunities as we, as they come across our desks. Just got one tonight before the meeting, somebody gave us an op, you know, an avenue to go check out. And we've been going every avenue, every, every lead that we get, even if it's just the tiniest, like, maybe you have a chance. We've been trying to go after every single one of those leads. We've been writing grants. We've had a lot with bonding in the past, this session was just really short. And so we're hoping in the next session, we've got some legislators who've been very supportive and have said that they will continue to help us try to get bonding money. That's kind of our, I guess our biggest thing is to try to really get that bonding. But we're continuing to hit every avenue, every grant, anything that won't kind of come our way, so.
When you say bonding, you mean essentially state grant funds that they issue through bonding? You're not actually taking out loans?
Correct.
Has the organization looked at its own ability to borrow in order to be able to manage this project?
Yes, and with the, so we're still, we did our lodge renovation project seven years ago, we're still paying off those loans. So we definitely can't cover the full amount, potentially a smaller amount if we were, you know, short a little bit, but nothing in the capacity that we're needing funds for. And, and insurance doesn't cover it, we've gone that route too, to see if it's covered by insurance in any, especially with the Ida damage even. But none of that is covered, so.
Barring the whole chunk of money falling in our lap one day. Their phase one here would be the Ida repair, that hundred and thirty-six. So there's, there's a viable project that's designed, ready to go. If that's the, the funding level that we're at. And we, we really do have to take care of that one way or another. Because it did take away some soil out in the back of that dam and that can really get worse.
What are they, what do they require for monitoring?
We have to, we have some depressions and some, I think that we have to measure every single day all summer long. It's, it's a lot of time consumed.
During last summer, when camp was going, we did measure it every day and there was no, no change. So it seemed that these depressions were something, but then they didn't progress, they didn't get worse. And we, we were out there measuring on the repay.
Did they give you a longer term plan for the monitoring? Like, do they say you got a five-year limit or, like, what do they say?
No, DEP wants to limit that as much as possible. They held us to having this fifty percent design in front of them before they would tell us, okay, you can monitor it this year.
Who knows what they're going to tell us next year and the year after. So we were trying to get it done as quickly as possible so that we don't have to continue to do all of these things. Because it also costs us money every time we send it to, so we have to send the measurements to our engineering company and then they have to send it to DEP. So every month, we're spending fif, at least fifteen hundred dollars just to do the monitoring, you know, so.
If I can, just, so if DEP comes back to you and says you can't keep the pond full and it has to come to whatever natural level that it leaks out to, what does that mean? Like, how low would it go?
It would empty.
It would empty completely at this point? So the dam would not contain, it would just empty completely?
If they told us to open it, it would drain completely.
Right, okay.
Which would really impact.
What's the likelihood of them doing that?
I don't think they're going to do that. I think they're going to give it to us, but they did use it as a tool to get this from us.
Of course. They like to use things as tools. But just wondering, you know, obviously, there's an ecosystem there, obviously, there's, you know.
They made us drain it in twenty twenty. It was drained.
Oh, really?
From May of twenty twenty until, till twenty, till May of twenty twenty-one.
Till it rained.
Till it, well, till it rained really hard. And if, if it rained all summer, we probably have no problem. But they, they made us drain it.
So is there, is there, is there a, what's the water source that feeds it?
So we have a, a major, we have actually two ponds on the property, one we don't use to swimming. And that drains and fills with the stream. And then it kind of sit in a hole, so just the natural rain runoff, it's a drainage. Yeah.
I think it's Lion Brook and the water source comes from south of Route forty-four, north of Lion Brook, through that second pond we call it, and then down to this pond and then down. And eventually ends up with National Brook through, through the state.
Now, now second pond's where you guys do the frogging and stuff in the summer. Now, now, second pond's where you guys do the frogging and stuff in the summertime, or is...
That's the third pond.
Oh, that's the third pond?
We, we know, but, I mean, it would just, like, second pond isn't any, in any shape to necessarily be a place that we can use for our water. If we had to, could we maybe, but then we're spending a hundred thousand dollars to, to move the, you know, to, to transport and do everything up there, and there's no, you know, facilities up there necessarily. It's a half a mile out in the woods.
Oh, that's right, second pond's where the zip lines.
Yeah. So it's not anywhere near or anything that's, you know, it'd be definitely a hit the program pretty much.
So, hearing that, you've had to drain this already, so this isn't something that's like in danger of collapsing anytime soon? Sounds like things have been stabilized for the most part, unless...
Yeah, I mean, every day we looked at it, nothing, besides the Ida damage.
Right.
I mean, even that, in July, when we had those heavy rains on, fourth of July weekend, we actually closed the camp early because of the rains, and there were some dams upstream from us that let go. And we had no damage during that storm to our dam. And the water was, it was raging, you know, for a few days, and nothing. And then maybe it loosened some of it for Ida, you know, when Ida came through and we had all that, you know, water then too, but nothing during those heavy rains, it would rain all summer, so.
Right.
It didn't affect it in any way, no change in the monitoring of any of the things that they're concerned about, so.
Yeah, and I know you mentioned that you've done some smaller scale fundraising. Have you guys looked at bigger, bigger scale, hopefully people that have lots of money?
We tried, we just, the beginning of April, we had a concert out, out at Stonehurst and raised twenty-two thousand dollars, but half of it was raised in twenty twenty because the concert was supposed to happen the week after the world shutdown. So, you know, and, and we've got, you know, they've offered to do some other things with us, but it's a, one, you know, once a year, we can do something big like that, you know?
Right.
We have a big, our auction type, so it was this weekend, but that money can't go to the dam. It's got to go to the normal operating funds to keep us, you know, some of it might go there, but we just, you know, we're still trying to make up all the money that we spent and lost with not having camp. So, because we had to do fundraising to keep ourselves afloat during twenty twenty when we didn't have camp, so. And we had kids that rolled over money from twenty twenty, so we gave some refunds, and then we rolled over money. So even last summer, when we had, you know, a thousand kids, their money was, had rolled over, so it had already been spent. So we're supposed to try to catch back up on those things as well.
So I've, I've spent, I've known Heather my, her whole entire life. I used to actually take, used to actually watch her, and then she watched my kids. But I've also had the privilege of working at the camp as a nurse. I know they, they are very good stewards of whatever resources they have. I've been out there, it's, it's a great camp, it's a great chance for kids to get out. There's all sorts of critters, that pond is loaded between the fish, the snapping turtles, the beavers. I mean, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity for kids, and they are unplugged. Those, if they come, there are no cell phones in the cabins, there are no cell phones on any of the campers all day long. They're just outside, unplugged, away from a TV, a computer, and they're just outside. And, and they're being taught how to work as a team, and they're taught leadership skills. So it's, it's a great asset that we have there, and I, I would hope, I, I was a little, little disturbed originally when Heather had, had come to talk to me while we were talking, and she, I said, what, you know, did you check with Congressman Courtney? And, and she was like, well, he said, you know, go get, check out all those towns and ask them for their ARPA funds. I'm thinking, but, you know, we, we're, you know, I mean, we have, we literally got a binder full of requests for the town, and this is actually what the Borough has for requests for ARPA funds. So I mean, I hope for your sake that there's state money and federal money that we can find you, and I, and I hope that, you know, as a council, that, you know, we can help them. I know you were, you had said something, the fifty thousand for the designs, correct? Is that something that, I think I saw somewhere's in here, fifty thousand was soft, the soft expenses are...
I mean, I think if we can, I think if we can get the towns to help us, at least we can get some design, like, the plans. If we can pay for the plans, then we have even more of a, a real number of what we need to go after for federal funds or state, you know, state funds. But there's no way that we can, you know, we're paying a little bit at a time, but we need to try to expedite some of that process to, to get the, make DEP a little happier and see that they can see the forward movement in progress faster too. So, and they have no money to help us, they've...
While you were speaking, I did briefly look over this one, one of the things you gave us. And one of the things that I was looking at is just in the past ten years, you've given back to the town of Kilmway over thirty-three thousand dollars in camperships. Which, seeing that, for me, it's huge. And I would definitely recommend, I'm glad to see that in here, and I hope that all the other presentations that you do, you include that in there. Hi, myself, I went to camp as a kid one time, and I'll tell you what, the memories I had from that. I can still think back to a lot of different things, a lot of different experiences when I went to camp as a kid. And I was one similar situation, came from a family where I, there was a local church that had donated, that allowed myself and my sister to go to camp. And it's stuff like the, the camperships that, without that, you're, there are kids that would love to go and just camp. And, I mean, it's, I completely support whatever we can do to help keep the camp around. And I would hate to see you lose that bond, the impact that that would have. Any other questions, comments from the public? Do you have anything else for us? Absolutely, thank you, and thank you for this additional information. And we will now move on to the agenda. Next item up is SUCCE, presentation by United Service on their application for American Rescue Plan Act funding.
...
So, my employer actually just got through hiring you guys on, essentially. So, my employer actually just got through hiring you guys on, essentially. And within a few weeks, we actually ended up using your services for a young man who needed them. You know, in my line of business, working on an ambulance, we deal with a lot. And so unfortunately, that was fortunately, you guys were there for that. And it's a growing need within this, the field I work in, that EAP and the need for that. In fact, the state of Connecticut requires us, you had mentioned one of the trainings, was suicide prevention for EMS providers. So these are the services that you could provide, which is interesting to hear about that as well. And I will say that it is good for employers to be able to have that. My, you know, I think the chairman has already asked, the question I had was really, where do we go after the two years? You know, when it comes down to financing and making sure that you'll be able to continue to provide these services. And answer that with two hours of legal services, which I guess depends on the lawyer you hire too. Yeah. Um, and if I remember correctly, in, in your application, um, this was basically gonna be like a two-year program. Um, what are your intentions for, at the end of the two years? Would you be coming back to the town for additional money? Or you, uh, would you be looking to transition any fees to the employers who would be, who would have been receiving those services during the two years?
Right, because I think we do trainings around how do I talk with people about making customer service? And deal with, uh, things like what happens when somebody says a racial comment to you? How, how do you respond to that? Or, you know, how do you maintain a safe and productive work environment when you're dealing with customers that come into your workplace? And so, things like that, that's real life things that people are gonna ask about. When I do the, when I do EAP services, I talk a lot with waitstaff about what's the culture like in a restaurant? What are the things that people really have to deal with when they go to a restaurant? Um, you know, those are the real life things that are gonna keep people employed and keep people happy and in a safe and productive work environment. And we have to can have those meaningful conversations.
So, um, my question is, do you have, um, so this is geared towards small businesses and, um, you're identifying that there's a gap in those services. Do you have a list or a, um, a, a number of small businesses that have reached out for, looking for EAP services but can't ultimately afford it? And so they opted not to pursue services that you know will engage in this service if the town were to provide the funding opportunity for that?
Any questions or comments?
So, my employer actually just got through hiring you guys on, essentially. Um, and, uh, within a few weeks, we actually ended up using your services for, uh, a young man who, who needed them. Um, you know, in, in my line of business, working on an ambulance, uh, we, we deal with a lot. And so unfortunately, that, that was fortunately, you guys were there for that. Um, and it's a, a growing need within this, the field I work in, uh, that EAP and the, the need for that. Um, and in fact, uh, the state of Connecticut requires us, you had mentioned one of the trainings, uh, was suicide prevention for EMS providers. So these are the services that you could provide, uh, which is interesting to hear about that as well. Um, and I will say that it, it is good for employers to be able to have that. Um, my, uh, uh, you know, I think the chairman has already asked, the question I had was really, w- where do we go after the two years? You know, when it comes down to financing and, uh, making sure that, uh, you'll be able to continue to provide these services? And answer that with, uh, two hours of legal services, which I guess depends on the lawyer you hire too. Yeah.
What do you have in mind? So for the two years, what services are you providing the town?
Well, yeah, I don't know if the town considers it, it's still interesting, but it's, I mean, I don't know. Well, whatever, but I think you should do that, but I'd say it's, we're, this is based on, um, employees' interest. Whatever you want to do, that's, I guess, part of the discussion. We were suggesting the employers, the town, um, their employees, uh, those dependents, the employees, the services, the owners. That are basically, um, who use us for the constitution of our services.
Now, would they, the employers, the employers pay you on top of that?
No.
Now, how many, how many employees are, are the employers that you're talking about? Every single?
Again, that would be yours, your town, so probably fine. It's very important for you to stop each other, but I don't know. Whomever, or it's a possess, I mean, it's, it's up to you.
And you'll do, and this, this includes your training to each one of the employers?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
And the only?
Well, we did, we did our small businesses, we, 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 it's all good to it. We have a, an office right by town, so I can train, um, the, the town on site. Or we, or we, to the white, I would have these offices, whatever. Or, or, depending on what they, because some of them don't wanna be offsite, they want us to be on site. It's not used to, used to, it's, it's not efficient. So, you know, that, Sarah's out here, she, she, or, at eleven o'clock at night, that's what it takes to get out there. We, we go out to the, whatever.
If, if I may?
So it says that, um, it's free to anybody, if the, for the employee.
That's covered. Mm-hmm.
That's covered in, under insurance, correct?
No, it's covered under this, um, if you do the funding.
I'm going a different avenue.
Okay.
So the employee needs your services and it says it's free here. I mean, I understand nowadays it's almost impossible to have, not have health insurance. What happens if they don't have, uh, uh, an avenue for health insurance?
What we're trying to do is, that's kind of, uh, hundred dollars on pocket.
Right, same, same.
Under this program, we don't have the services for, and we don't have to, uh, just let them have, um, you know, have to be for that. But again, if you're, if you're, it does like, you know, services, you're, so you don't have a hundred dollars on pocket. And so that's the type of thing is, we look at what do you need and what, that, what will your insurance pay for? What other benefits might you be eligible for to help do this? And sometimes frankly, there's free stuff out there that you just don't really can get. And we do, we can get, you know.
If I can, I just, um, in looking at the application, it appeared that the application was geared mostly towards, uh, meeting the needs of small businesses for the town. So, you know, collectively, the council would probably define what small business meant, which would likely not mean the free delays of, of, of Killingley, right? But also your, um, proposal includes, um, count, uh, um, an indication of personnel cost, uh, personnel hours of about a hundred hours. So essentially, my question is, is, you know, if you have, you know, thirty new employees that are small businesses that have, um, joined onto this service under this program and you exhaust those hundred hours in the first year, um, then the program ends in year one? Or, like, how do you do that, y- you know, based under this proposal, it looks like there's a, a certain number of hours that are covered? And a certain number of co-pays that are covered in the, in visits within this program? So, just wondering what that means. Do you have the manpower to manage, say, an additional fifty small businesses that would potentially come on board with employees and everything like that, with all the training and your current workload and staffing and everything like that? You have capacity to manage that?
Nobody, they won't all start on the same day.
True, but I'm just saying.
They're not gonna be eligible on the same day, they all won't want it on the same day. The reality is, we're probably gonna have to sell it to someone. But even though it's free, you can use it.
Sure. Sure, but just understanding whether or not there's capacity to manage, you know, if it were all of a sudden wildly popular and you have a lot of small businesses that, um, take the town up on their offer, is that, is the, is the service really gonna be able to be there at the staffing level that you've, that y- you normally would present at?
Yes.
She needs to sleep too.
I know.
Just one more comment there. Um, you know, one thing they, I, I, eleven years on working the ambulance and working with, alongside of these folks at United Services, I, I have seen the te, I can testify, I'll meet them at somebody's house at, you know, five o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the morning. It does, doesn't really matter, um, that they do actually come out and do their job, uh, and do it well. On making sure that, uh, people are well taken care of in the mental health end of things. So, uh, that is definitely a testimony to what you guys have been doing right straight along, um, which is, uh, awesome. I just want to, you know, you, you, uh, most of us here wouldn't ever think of, hey, there's a clinician actually going out to my house to help me, um, when I'm going through some kind of mental health crisis. That's what, uh, you guys do, I know other agencies out here do the same thing, um, which is just greatly appreciated.
Jason, can I?
Yep, go ahead, Patty.
Hi, thank you for the, uh, presentation. I just have a question. It says here that United Services supports twenty-one towns in northeastern Connecticut. How many other towns besides Killingley are you offering these EAP programs to small businesses? And do you have any statistics on that? So this is a pilot program for you then. Are there any other facilities throughout the state or other states that you know of that are offering this type of thing to municipalities?
Okay.
It's not something we invented, but.
Okay, thank you.
Do you also have a contract or like a sample contract or proposal, or was that your proposal?
Um, this was the proposal, because our, our regular contract is, uh, we, we, so we're not, we're, we're, that's, they're saying, and I'm just, it's not, so. and I'm assuming it's not, uh, so when you, uh, have, uh, three, four, one, uh, most of the time, it's the employer's, uh, cover. All of my employees, uh, my, my employees, uh, have some checks, uh, but whatever. Um, you know, I don't wanna cover my regular employees, but not my part timers, right? They, they tell us that and, and we go with it. But that's when they're purchasing sort of case work.
So, if I, if I can really quick to piggyback on that. So in this scenario, would the employer, so if, if the council decided that the coverage would be extended to all small businesses with fifty or fewer employees in the town of Killingley, the employees and their dependents, would the, um, would your agency essentially sign a contract or have the employer sign a contract with your agency, enrolling them in the program? How does the town know what, how do we get statistics to know? We don't necessarily need to know who you're servicing per se, but that the funds are being expended on the criteria set by the council in being the employer with fifty or fewer employees and their dependents? And that that's being, you know, how do we manage that monitoring?
We would do outreach, um, so, uh, we, uh, we, uh, something like that. So, give it to somebody, put it on, but then we would, we would have not many contacts. We, we, uh, it's, uh, probably, uh, we, uh, where all of these small businesses are, same. Also, people are, uh, so every time we have to treat, they know, uh, so, uh, but a minimum of once a month, uh, so, uh, you know, we got, we're forty, they have to have it there for six months. Here's where they go. This is what happens. So, all of those types of things, we're, uh, it says, these are all things that happen. Does the, uh, so, uh, we consider all of the employees that are, uh, this, uh, town, uh, not, uh, so, uh, businesses. It's that, uh, uh, you know, that we sort of, um, provided, uh, six, uh, your constitution, uh, and, uh, sort of, uh, those that came to us, uh, services. Under this, uh, that's good, uh, is an umbrella contract.
For those employers that may currently be, or may have just signed up into EAP services that would fall under the collective umbrella of that, do they get two years of free services? Or do they maintain their existing contract?
They get a little bit more than what's here, so they have to tell us what they want to do.
Okay, just understanding because, you know.
Yeah, this is, they get, because they're, they, they can do.
Okay, just wanted to understand.
Is your program, uh, state funded as well? There's no state funds? Now, in your application, under timeline, um, towards the end of it, it references that the program will be full or, uh, fully operational, for the two years or until the funds are expended. Now, you would just mention that you would be, uh, to me, the way you presented it seemed like that you would be the one taking the risk of if it went further than, um, fifty thousand, that, that was something you would cover.
The issue has to be, uh, depends on the, uh, contract, uh, that's, that's the deadline for that. So it's, if, if this didn't happen till eighteen, that's really the deadline, but it's, it's still, that's the deadline.
Any other questions? Just seems like if, if you put limitations in your proposal, it, it seems, and you say it's unlimited, it should, that contract should reflect that, you know what I mean?
Well, this is the contract, so we, we get to a contract, let's say, we decide what you want.
Right, you said the contract was for the, the actual employer. You said the proposal for, for, was for us.
We normally use this for, uh, employer, uh, employer, we actually, uh, but they, uh, they should, uh, they should, uh, service, uh, such. They can choose what they want, uh, that's not, uh, uh, that's not.
But could you give us parameters, like say, say, every, every employer in town wanted it? I mean, that would be, I mean, that would be a bad gamble on your end, because it would be just astronomical, uh, time on your end. But could you give us parameters on what that would include, you know what I mean?
So I'm thinking he's looking for that umbrella contract, a sample of that umbrella contract that we would engage in as the town to your agency and what potential parameters we would have to fill in.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? I, I would probably start with fifty or fewer for a small business. Um, and then I can look at that with Jill and see if we should look at, I just wanna get the number of how many employers that looks like. And then we could potentially give the second tier of a hundred or fewer. But I wouldn't imagine that we would go, small businesses, a hundred or fewer, I, you know, that, you know. So I, I would think that that's our, probably our two breakpoints, if you will. Are those two categories, if you will. But I would probably have to spend some time with Jill to, um, best understand, um, volume of employers that meet those criterias.
And, and frankly, you.
Now roughly, do you know how many employers you service in the town that have fifty or fewer employees? Or a hundred or fewer employees, or is that something you have to do a little digging and get the numbers?
No, he's asking what you currently serve.
What you currently serve.
For your current clientele, how many employers do you currently serve that are Killingley employers? That are, that have fifty or fewer employees? You guys will probably have to figure that out, yeah. Just trying to understand volume of what you currently have for clientele.
So, Jason, can I ask a question?
Go ahead Patty.
Okay, so I'm going on the theory that there's no stupid question. And you mentioned a couple of concerns, so sexual harassment, um, you mentioned Narcan, you mentioned alcohol and drug. Okay, so this is my question. You're providing services to the employees on behalf of the employer. The town is paying for this service under an umbrella program. Now, what happens if there is a lawsuit with an employee and an employer? We have paid for the service, where's the, if there is any, this is what I'm trying to figure out. Is there any liability to the town from a legal standpoint, since we're paying for the service? If there's an issue with a lawsuit with an employee and an employer that we have covered? Or are we simply funding the program and you're individually contracting with these employers? As in, we're just giving you a list of our employees to market to? Does? Correct. Okay, and I understand that, but is there any exposure to the town since we're funding the program?
So Patty, I'll take that piece. So, um, I really don't, I, yeah, I really don't think that the town has a risk or liability associated with that. We are a funding mechanism. While the, um, contract, the umbrella contract is with the town and United's, and United Services, the employer and employee, uh, you know, if they were to, um, trace down and, or make an allegation of, you know, improper, um, consultation or, or whatever, they would, they would bring United Services into that, uh, litigation. But the town wouldn't, because the town's not providing, the town's not actually providing any of that service. We're simply a pay mechanism, so, um, the town wouldn't have liability.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you Patty. Any other questions, comments from council? Do you have anything else for us? All right, and if you could include in that just, uh, some figures for the towns you, the employers you do service in our town? And break it down, fifty or fewer employees, a hundred or fewer employees as well. And then just a figure as far as how many other employers you service in town that are bigger than a hundred. So kind of three different categories. And I'd like to thank you for bringing all this information forward to us. You're welcome. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is seven, executive session, and we have none, so we'll move on to item eight. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, this meeting is adjourned.